Any comments or questions? Just want to say for the record that we considered this item last year sometime. And given the fact that we have this opportunity for this additional funding, it's really apparent that there won't be any need for this. So I really appreciate that this has come up and it doesn't surprise me that it's coming up as a potential duplication of services. But I do want to say for the record that we talked about this was part of a report that we had last year. And we had not opted to, we reserved it for just in case we needed to use it for the rest of the transitional housing project. So, or to further anything on the project. Which really gives us reason to be really thankful for all the great work the staff has done to get us that pair of funding and put us in this position. So, all right, if there's no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion. Member Byers?
I moved to authorize payment of the $721,000 loan to terminate the loan agreement entered into on July 7, 2021 with the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department for the development of the Gateway Transitional Housing Project.
Number Byers, can you tell me the page number that that?
That is 63.
63. It's not showing up on page 63.
On your paper packet?
Is it 63? Is it 63 of the packet?
Yes.
Oh, got it. Okay.
And are you in the Tura packet?
60. I am in the Tura packet, but I was using the... Yeah, see, see that? It says 63 right there.
That's...
Yeah. The... Yeah. All right, thanks. There it is. All right, thank you. So we have a motion and a second to authorize payment of $721,000 to terminate the loan agreement entered into on July 7, 2021 with the State of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department for the development of the Gateway Transitional Housing Project. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All those, motion carries unanimously. Sorry, guys. Next item on the agenda is 4.2 revised trailer disposition plan staff report. I'm sorry, can you repeat adding new priority? What number did you say? Thought you said three. It was three. Yeah, okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, I have a speaker request form, Janice, if you'll come forward and to the podium. Hector will mic you up. You can just stay where you are. Go ahead and have a seat. You don't have to get up. Okay, come on, come on over. Whatever CC is for you.
My name is Janice, I'm in Gateway. I still live in Mexico. I think that was when I first discovered the trailers. And I was in the fire. First of all, I had a stroke. So these tears aren't here. It's just my neurons going, oh, here's an emotional cry. So please, don't go there. So I spoke with this gentleman. I said, I have a need that is different than the accessibility that you're doing in buildings. I need to stand up. So the housing that's available to me is upstairs and is wheelchair accessible, but I have a block, you know, because I fell during the whole thing and broke my pelvis and elbow. And then the doctor said I was having a stroke. And so I now have a group in town where I put together those stroke people that we can do whatever it takes to get up upright. So the money for my fire, for me to be in this position, which is a great trade-off. Okay, so I asked about this trailer that was shown to me because it's perfect, it's narrow, and it stands up. I can take, why I need certain beds, I don't know. I can take these out and I can make it work for me. Going back to Mountain View State, $300,000, I can't get less than, you know, whatever the square footage is. And that's just not for me right now. So I wrote three questions that I have. And we'll just have those ready. So first of all, I was intrigued when you were talking about the options of being gifted, which shocked me. I was interested in seeing how I could acquire them. And I wrote, if I had granted ownership of a travel trailer, I'd have been looking in. Authority part, even by donation sale, will I receive the full transfer title? Does it cut to me totally? Or is it still, is there a lien to it that the state or Jackson County owns, like the apartments or other stuff like that? And will I personally be responsible for finding the third option? Because putting it in there apart like this is just not safe for me and it's not worth it. So I'm looking at properties that people have that they're willing to build this into. But I need to know at what time is more January date if I can start doing that. Because people need to put in sewer systems and stuff like that. So this is just information for me, how it might play out for me to be in a safe environment. So that was number two, is I've seen the date changed to January. I'm wondering if that is still in effect. Waiting doesn't work for me because I am obsessively a duoloc. And I want to know that things are going to be the way they need to be and I'm a rule follower. I mentioned that I'm more afraid of going to jail abroad and I have a stroke. Well, now that still is in effect. So I'm just looking for the rules that I'm gonna have to follow for me. Last one is, I don't have access to the internet right now over here. Where can I find all the details of how this is playing out? So I can look at it, print it out, and follow it. So this is it for me. This is the turn of life. Okay, I must be, I need to live a certain way. And this is ideal, you know, small, that's what it does. Is there any question I'm not asking you that you think I might want to ask you?
Janice, what I want to say is that in this part of our agenda, we don't engage in question and answer, but we have all of your questions. First of all, bless your heart. And we have all of your questions on the record. And if and when, if or when we adopt this policy, which we haven't done yet, we, I'm sure can arrange to have staff reach out to the, there's going to be an outreach to the community with all of the information. And we'll make sure that the questions you've asked are answered in that outreach. So I know, I heard you loud and clear about wanting to be able to plan ahead. We're working as fast as we can for that purpose as well. As soon as we get there, we can arrange for you to make sure that the questions you've asked are answered in the outreach.
My last comment is, I'm really surprised, you know, we've been getting there for eight, nine, I thought the last one moved in. And I'm just amazed that people have been there for so long and want something new to be doing. Now, let's do, and our answer, so waiting for their to come back out. I find that hard for me to be in that environment. We should all step out and see if there's something that I can do. And that's my story.
Thank you.
The all of these ones, for the community providing, the status, one is working by packing, a couple of just wanted to say, for the community, providing to the residents of the Gateway, the government, the well, the residents, they're having a very, you can see the trailer. Also, the very pattern, the residents who are visiting, including all of the artists. They are good to go. The talent, the ability, and the only, and the soul, the soul is very deep. Both of them, what we can reach from, the leaders of other departments, other departments in the house, so. So, package under construction, the insurance, just listening to that, the cremation, work, you know, we got, soonly, it will be distributed by access, during the study, involved directly with.
Right. So just to reiterate, to make sure that everybody heard, you're preparing a packet that will provide all of the residents there with the information. You're also going to be providing a survey to ask about interest. A questionnaire for each occupant, each trailer. Yeah. And then, and that'll be forthcoming after, after we resolve the adoption of a policy.
Or based on that.
Great. That's great. All right, are there any other questions or comments? So I'll entertain a motion. Member Colay?
I move to adopt the revised disposition policy for the trailers at the Gateway Transitional Housing Site, adding a new priority three.
Second. Thank you. I'm looking for the motion on page 65. Thank you. Sorry, it's hard for me to do two things at once with one computer. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to adopt the revised disposition policy for the trailers at the Gateway Transitional Housing Site, adding a new priority three. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Gary, for all your hard work. I don't know if you know this, but this is, this was originally how Tura set out when we received those trailers to see those go to residents who were hardest impacted by this fire and those that were occupying it. So to see this circle back and have it end the way we intended in the first place, it was in partnership with one of our other partners, Rogue Action Center, who provided us some funding with, to help with transfers. I mean, there's quite a history to this. And I just, I'm so impressed that we're able to circle back and come back to this very, very solution. And I want you to know that because you weren't here. And I want you to know that because you weren't here. Well, it's well done. Thank you. Alright, the next item on the agenda is. Items from the chair or board. Do we have any items? I do not. Written communications, there are none. This meeting is adjourned at 6:26.